Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to let you know I'm going to take off my mask just to speak and then I'll put it back on. I was told by a couple of people that were listening last time that my voice was a little bit muffled with the mask on, so I'm going to try to do my best to articulate clearly what it is that we're doing here tonight. This is a special city council meeting this evening for November 30th. Again, I'll quickly go through the rules. By the way, due to the increased community transmission of COVID-19 in Polk County, which we're seeing not only here but across the state, and let's keep our fingers crossed with a new variant that we can keep that tab down, we have implemented face mask coverings requiring in our city buildings. The requirements apply to both staff and the visiting public and includes attendance at our council meetings. And if anybody doesn't have one, and I thank you, everybody, for wearing them this evening, we can supply them for you. The public is hereby notified that the city council will not tolerate disruption of our business meetings. People wishing to attend this meeting are reminded of the following: We welcome germane comments from the public at the appropriate time, but this is a council business meeting, and this one is very specific this evening. So the council needs to conduct that business, and the council has rules that are validly adopted under Iowa law, and those rules will be followed. Anyone engaging in disruptive conduct in the council chambers or the great hall will result in being ruled disruptive and being ordered to leave the building and being denied read admittance for the remainder of the day. No person will be permitted to stand in the council chamber during council sessions between the audience seats and/or on the seats and the council members except for the persons addressing the council at the speaker's microphone and only after being recognized. All persons desiring to address the council may do so only when recognized, and the council reserves the right to limit the speaker's time in the order in which the speakers may address the council. Under Section 2-70, the city code is illegal to interrupt any person who is addressing the council except by a council member, and is illegal to disrupt the council meeting. Everyone in attendance has First Amendment rights, and any disruptive conduct by one person or group impinges on the rights of others present, so disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. Those who disrupt the meeting will not be called on again during the remainder of the meeting and will be ordered to leave the building and may be cited or arrested for disorderly conduct, trespass, or interfering with the good order of the meeting or other applicable Prior to start, I want everybody here to -- we've all seen some things that have come out about the maps and the wards. Of course, the districts for congressional representatives have been set. There has been, through the census, a new count. We have taken that into account as we looked at our city. There was a receipt of a map that came out earlier from the county, but it was only a suggestion. That map, we are not discussing this evening. The maps that are up over here are the three that we are considering. And then we will submit our recommendation back to the county. And I will turn it over in a minute to our manager and everybody. So anybody that was concerned about what they saw earlier, that's not what we're discussing here this evening. That was just a concept that showed that with the new counts, that it is possible to lay out, and we believe that these maps represent a much greater representation than what we had seen before. Mr. Manager, I think we're going to call the meeting to order and have roll call, and then I'm going to turn it over to you to give us a couple of comments. So, meeting's called to order. Clerk, will you please take roll?
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westegard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
All right. We need an approval to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
I'll move approval.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager now, and then we're going to open it up. We have gotten, I believe, three individuals that have asked to speak about this, but I would like to have our legal and our city manager go over exactly what our amendments to our city precinct and ward boundaries are and the possibility of scheduling our official public hearing. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, city council members, and members of the public. I think what would be helpful is to make sure that the council and the public listening understand the process in place, and the mayor touched upon that. The underlying maps that are being presented tonight have what are called precincts, and it is the county auditor's office responsibility to first draw those precincts and provide those to the city, for which they did. In addition to that, they provided additional information that the mayor spoke of, of a potential ward map. That, again, is not being considered tonight. That is, in the purview of the council, to submit a ward map that either adheres completely with the precincts that underline, and understand precincts, think of them as somewhat of a neighborhood shape, and there are 80 or so of those, depending on which proposal we're looking at. And so what we did at first, through staff level with our IT department, which, by the way, council did a fabulous job with our, what's called GIS division within IT, in taking the description of those precincts from the county, putting those into our software that was then available to draw potential ward maps, and that's how that has allowed us to quickly and nimbly actually improve on the maps with each phase, as you see maps one, two, and three. The first map, and the first option that's available to the council strictly keeps the boundaries of the precincts that were originally provided to us from the county in place. So that was our starting point, which I believe we were able to do about almost two weeks ago. And so that first plan, again, adheres to the original. In discussions with the county staff that had produced those precincts, we better understood what their goals were, which was to keep the number of precincts as low as possible and to make sure that any precinct boundaries allowed for one ballot to exist within each precinct. In other words, each precinct would have the same representative from each level of government, so that you didn't have to handle two different ballots within the same voting place of, within a precinct. Knowing those goals and knowing that the deviation between the total population of any ward structure needed to be as tight as possible and as close as possible, with an average, with four wards, we needed to aim for about 53,000 in population of each ward. And so what we put on these maps are showing you the deviation from what that average would have been. And in some instances, the number might be slightly higher, in others, it might be slightly lower. So that's what you're seeing as the line that's called deviations. One of the other considerations that has to be taken into place is compactness, and I'll let legal kind of speak to that if there's questions. And so those were kind of the guidelines, that once our GIS staff understood those overlying goals, we were able to submit two additional maps that looked at maybe some more intuitive lines and boundaries. You'll see within the final map, on the southern portion of our city, between wards three and four, you would now have, if you chose Plan Three, a very intuitive boundary on the south side with southwest nine. So those are the types of goals that were put in front of us and given you some options. Now, as far as the steps that need to be taken from here, this is the opportunity to get some public input and also then submit the preference of the city back to the county auditor for any potential comments that the county auditor's office might have. And they've got, I believe, a week, six or seven days.
Less than seven or more than 10.
Okay. Or no more than 10, to get back with us. So there will be the need to bring back the final decision, if you will, with a public hearing in advance of that, to another council meeting. So we have the December 20th regular council meeting available to us and the potential, if need be, a special council meeting. We have until essentially the end, I don't know if you know the exact date, Jeff.
I believe it's December, it's either the end of December or very early January.
The very first couple of days of January. So the intent here is to have this finished up by the 20th, if not sooner, if the council so desires for a special council meeting, with the hearing and a hearing notice, so that, again, and on that part, for the public listening, we can take comments to help understand what the public's thoughts are on these options. But the official hearing will be at the next council meeting, right in advance of the approval. So we thought it would be best to have two opportunities for the general public to have some input, both tonight and the next meeting. I think that kind of lays it out. If there's additions that Jeff, our city attorney, wants to make, or questions, maybe just process-wise before we open up, so everyone is working off of the same process.
Jeff, any comment?
Not really. Scott did a nice job laying it out. What I would offer is that the statute specifically provides that it's the council that makes the actual determinations of precincts. That's generally based on data coming from the county, and the council decides the wards. There's no statutory provision for the county to do that. I think that the map was offered as a courtesy, as of a way that it could work, as Scott indicated, to achieve what it was that the county had as an objective, but it is the city council that makes that determination. There's two places in state code that govern the standards that council has to follow. The wards have to follow precinct boundaries, must be composed of contiguous territory, must be composed of compact territory, as compact as practicable, and have to follow as closely as practical the ideal ward population. So those are the criteria that were reviewed in giving council different options to look at this evening and the public to comment on. The other item that I would mention is, this is not the public hearing on the adoption. This is a different way for council to receive comments from the public, but the actual public hearing will come on the 20th, and that's before there is an ordinance, and the statute requires that the precincts and wards be set by ordinance. And so that's what council would actually be voting on after the public hearing on the 20th, and the hearing, the public hearing, will be on the proposed ordinances. But this is an opportunity for the public to provide comments to the council, because council has to provide this, whatever decision council comes up with, that has to be provided to the county auditor for review and comment for not less than seven or more than 10 days.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney and Mr. Manager. Let's go ahead and open it up. And council, should we start out with each of our speakers? Get two minutes?
That's fine.
Okay. Bridgette Peterson. Is Bridgette here?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Bridgette. My pronouns are she/her's. Frankly, I think this meeting is already really ridiculous. The fact that we all came here thinking that certain maps were going to be proposed and then finding out at the last second that they're not is incredibly disorganized. I have a few issues with how this entire meeting has been structured. One of these is that, according to Kay, legal wasn't able to get the agenda for this meeting circulated until yesterday. So if someone needs mobility accommodations, they have to request them three days in advance. So how is that helpful to them if they want to attend this meeting and they need accommodations and they can't get them? Also, you spent the beginning of this meeting talking about community spread of COVID. Why is there no virtual option? I spent the last week sick with a viral infection. Fortunately, my husband and I didn't have COVID, but we had three different COVID scares in the last two weeks, and I'm assuming the same is probably true for everyone in this room. So why aren't you at least fighting for a virtual option? It's ridiculous.
Okay. Bridgette, do you have any comments?
I'm getting to my comments, so if you'll let me finish, I'm getting to them. I had to change up a lot of my comments at the last second because I was given all this new information at the beginning of this meeting, which is incredibly disorganized and frankly ridiculous. Not one of you has yet to acknowledge that we're parcelling up stolen land during Native American History Month. You changed the purpose and tone of this meeting from a public hearing to a performative acting, active listening engagement. You purposely rescheduled the hearing really close to the deadline, so that there's not really a lot of time to debate this in good faith.
Natalie Harwood.
I want to echo some comments about, this is not very accessible for me because it's really difficult to try and get here and get child hair to get here, and so if we don't know ahead of time whether or not you're considering the county map, that's pretty frustrating because I didn't know that, and this is my first time ever coming to a council meeting, and it's like, this information is really difficult to get. So, you know, I'm in Ward one, I like the shape of Ward one, so, you know, I'm okay with any one of these maps, but it's really frustrating to have, like, information out there that we might be making comments on the county map, and that's not the case. But as it is, I'm glad to hear it's not being considered.
Is council okay? Should we open it up and see if anybody else has any pertinent comments? Anybody else like to speak about the maps? These three that we have proposed up here?
I live in Ward three, ZIP Code 50312. In quote, the November 24th news release sent by the city manager's office, quote, "At the November 30th meeting, council members were consider proposed precincts and ward boundaries and a map from the Polk County Auditor, as well as boundaries and a corresponding map developed by city staff," end quote. So I came here expecting discussion, deliberation, wild party about the Polk County Auditor's map, because it said in your news release, although this gentleman says it was because the newspapers said it, it didn't make it true, you guys issued the news release saying you were going to discuss it. So it's a little disappointing, sounds a little backroom dealing to me. I moved from Chicago, I know backroom dealing. So it's a little disappointing, frankly. And as someone who's served as an election judge, a poll worker, it really is kind of difficult to make sure, if you have several ballot styles in your precinct, errors are made. So it's not an unreal or request by the auditor to have precincts be whole when it comes to ballot styles. So disappointment, and thank you to the auditor for requesting that. Thank you.
Since this is just an informational meeting, can I ask some questions and get answers?
Potentially. Go ahead.
Okay. Do we have any idea why we want less precincts? You said the auditor wanted less precincts, like, the smallest number possible.
Okay, so it's our understanding that that then allows for fewer ballots to actually have to be printed.
Fewer ballots to be printed?
Mm-hmm.
For, like, the overlap issue?
I'm sorry?
For, like, the overlap issue, or?
Yeah, that question would probably be best towards the auditor, but our understanding is that they wanted the largest population within each precinct and the fewer precincts.
Okay. Is there any map that, on any of these three maps, where there are precincts that have two school board representatives where that issue exists? Like, is there any of these precincts that has overlap with school board?
No.
No, okay.
They would all have individual.
Okay, cool. Are you going to have multiple maps at the hearing, or just the map that you proposed to the county?
The intent would be to only have the proposed map.
Okay. And then what was the legal definition of compact?
I'm sorry?
What was the legal definition of compact? You said that they need to be compact.
Compact.
So the Secretary of State has guidance that they send out to all the cities, and on page seven of their guidance, the Secretary of State says wards must be as compact as possible. That's not exactly accurate, they have to be as compact as practicable. But detailed standards for compactness are found in Iowa Code, Section 42.4, Sub 4, and that has an entire statutory listing of compactness, and, I mean, it's multiple paragraphs, so I'm not going to read it here and what the formula is, but that's where the definitional language comes from.
Is it essentially not to have, like, creeping out areas, like the whole, like, gerrymander type of maps that you see?
Well, I mean, the idea would be that the shape should be squares, rectangles, or hexagonal, for the most part, and not have strangely irregular shapes, I believe is what the statute says. If you look at what the state legislature approved, and one of their stated comments on why they rejected the first map was over compactness, I think these would be every bit as compact and less irregular, and in fact, I think they're less irregular than the state maps that the state legislature approved. I mean, you're never going to have, because of the precincts, because of natural boundaries like the river, the statute also talks about political boundaries, so for example, where you have incorporated versus unincorporated.
I also believe that they take into account, you know, the areas that we associate with Des Moines, like when you are describing areas in Des Moines, I think those two represent those best. And I believe, I think number two had the best, the deviations, yeah. So I think that one, I prefer number two over number one. But I also think that just like what is given and taken from Ward 3 and 4 makes the most sense in number two. And I would encourage everybody that's at this meeting, since we have public input, to take a look at the maps and decide which one you like best and to make your recommendation because that's what the public input is for. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, Adam Callanan. He/him pronouns, Ward 3. How many does it have? A few things to say because obviously there was a change before this, so a lot of my comments no longer make sense. I think that, I don't know what the city's role in this is, but we have a population of over 200,000 people, but just four wards and seven members of council, including the mayor. And I think that it would be a great thing to start looking at getting more representatives because that's a very small number of representatives for a large number of people. I know cities in other places that have more representation for less people. I just think that solves a lot of problems whenever you have more representation that way. Also, just want to point out with the setting of the day of the hearing, December 20th is right before Christmas, but it's also exactly 14 days before the state's deadline on January 3rd, which maybe that'll work out. It just, it seems like it's going to be a pressure on city staff or whoever actually draws up these maps if we make any changes off of that. So I think probably a special meeting before then would be more appropriate, but like I said, if the city's confident they can do that, and that's different, but I obviously don't completely understand all that as a, just a resident. And also, I'm kind of curious, I don't know if the city has answered this, but why the public wasn't notified of the change in the maps? Because there was a press release with a different map proposed and saying the county would propose, but then just walking in the room, it was different, which is just, it seems really weird in a situation that's already weird and confusing, considering that the county is supposed to propose amendments to the city's map and not make up their own map. It's just really, really confusing as to what's going on here. Thank you. Map one or two.
Jeff, I believe the comment about Ward, the number of representatives would require a state law change. Is that correct?
The, there's actually, stop it, Kay. There we go. I apologize because I could not hear what he said. So what the?
He wanted more representatives.
He suggested that there be six representatives.
That, that actually could be done by council under state law. State law provides for council and ward representation. You can have, there's two, two different forms of government, and there is a process that council would have to go through. You could change from four wards and two at-large to six wards, but, but there.
Then six council members. Could we have 12 council members if we wanted?
No.
Or nine?
No. No, that's not, that's not what we opted for.
That's.
Yeah, that would require state law change.
That would require state law change.
You can't make more council members. You could, could change the representation from wards, four wards and two at-large to six wards, but, but there.
Than six council members?
You would.
Could we have 12 council members if we wanted?
No.
Or nine?
No. No, that's not, that's not what we opted for. Yeah, that would require state law change.
That would require state law change.
You can't make more council members. You could, could change the representation from wards, four wards and two at-large to six wards and the mayor. That you could do without additional action, but to make more city council members, you would have to have state law change.
Is there state law change or charter change?
That's a statutory requirement.
Along those lines.
And then we'd have to redraw and come up with six balanced boards.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not prepared to speak. I haven't done a lot of work. It's just based on general knowledge. I haven't done any work to do this, but that, that would be my best advice to you today without doing any additional research.
Along those lines, would clarification of what primary resident, residence is for a council member be considered by the council, or would that be also state law?
I don't understand the question.
Could you give your name, please?
Pardon me?
Could you give your name, please?
My name is Susan Henry. My concern, my concern is that those of us in Ward 4 did not have representation until Mr. Voss was elected because Councilmember Gatto lives, resides in Ward 3 and has for seven years.
Yeah, that's not a question for me, ma'am.
So what my question, is that a state law, or is there some, can you, can the city council tighten up what residency, primary residence means? That's my question.
Mayor, or Jeff, I mean, that's state law, so that we'd have to refer to the state law for all of that. That's in place. There's not an ability to change that.
I believe there was already a hearing, and I meet all legal requirements, and I've won three elections and represent Ward 4. And I don't, I don't think that that needs to be discussed anymore.
All right. Seeing that there's no other speakers, let's, no, go ahead. Step up then. Well, so docs have to be submitted to the. So by the way, and I think it was already pointed out, but the documents in our recommendation have to be submitted to the Secretary of State by the 3rd of January of 2022. So that's, that's kind of the drop dead date that, that we have to comply with. Go ahead.
Cool. Taylor Weber, Ward 3. I think overlooking, I'll get to the maps, definitely have comments on recommendations, but I think overlooking some of the comments on accessibility is really short sighted. Not only were the, was the agenda not available until yesterday on your guys' forum on your website to sign up to speak, you only had the regular council meetings in there, you didn't have the special ones. So if I wanted to sign up to speak, I couldn't, so that kind of sucks. I didn't see any other languages that any of this information was put out on, and I know we have lots of Des Moines residents that speak other languages, so it's really not accessible for them. Again, virtual options, like I had several remote meetings today with people across the country, so it's wild that we can't have a meeting where people give public comment virtually. Unfortunate as well, I know we're streaming this or whatever we're doing, but I haven't seen any of the maps put up on the screen that would get shown to anyone watching at home or being able to follow along. I have never seen these posted online in the three different versions of the maps with the specifics. Again, like it's really hard to come prepared to these things if we haven't done our job to make this possible. And I understand we're working in a finite amount of time between when we get information from the county to the deadline, but like that's literally your guys' job, so that'd be cool if we could do it better. I also would love more information on the mix-up between why we're not talking about the county maps when that's what the city said we were, neither here nor there. As far as the maps themselves are concerned, I have a big problem with number three. As you'll notice in number three, they've grouped together not only a majority of the west and south side of Des Moines, but linked downtown Des Moines and the East Village business areas together. If you think about how much money is in those areas, how much business influence is in those areas, and then also how much money was spent in the last election for that ward, it's incredibly troubling to say we're concentrating all of that business district into one area instead of, again, diversifying who is being represented in those areas. I think if you look down at the other maps, it's great to have a line that goes directly south on Southwest 9th, but does that make Ward 3 less diverse in the population that is represented if that just gives a downtown area and not additional residencies? So I really think it's unfortunate my mic was cut because if this isn't a real hearing, then let's genuinely talk and give input. I think I've been super respectful the entire time and just trying to give feedback on the process that affects us, and we don't do it again for 10 more years. So we really don't, we could like do this like a bunch better than we are now.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? You want to put that back on the? I apologize, the mic was left on the floor for some reason.
Hi, Kavya Parsa, Ward 3. I want to express my thanks for the opportunity to openly hear from the public on our opinions as to these wards, since they do directly affect our voting rights. I share in the opinions that we should have been given more notice and opportunity to provide this public feedback, and I hope that a better opportunity will be given at the December 20th hearing than more notice in multiple languages, particularly Spanish, which affects a significant amount of our Ward 3 population in particular, will be sent out so that people can weigh in on their voting options. I also would like, if we're allowed to address questions to the council, as Mr. Sanders said would be allowed, if you could address why you felt the need to propose additional maps to the county map, or how that you feel, how you think that these maps are superior to what, to that which the county proposed?
I'll ask the city manager to address that, but the, as he mentioned earlier, our wards, in the way we put them together, based on the state rules and law, also, the city council makes that decision, not the county. But go ahead. Scott?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. In addition to that, after the press release went out that was mentioned before, that consideration would be given to the county, we had additional communications with the county that clarified they had no intent for that map to have been a proposal. So that was clarified after that, that news release went out. In addition to that, additional conversations with the county made it clear that they were open to the idea of letting the city adjust on the precinct boundaries as well. And so that gave us the opportunity to come up with cleaner lines that you see in some of the subsequent options that have been given.
I'm sorry, a follow-up question. Doesn't the statute say that the precinct boundaries are to be determined by the counties unless there's a specific process gone through by the city council?
So, correct in the sense that they are open to suggested changes. So that's what this meeting is for. There was, there was not a requirement to have any public input at this meeting. That was a decision by council to make sure that there was this option, and that's the first point. The second point being that, again, the process is such that we can ask for changes in the precincts, and that's what this step is for, is to say, we like the way these ward maps are drawn, and to get there, there may be some changes in the precincts.
So at the December 20th meeting, does that mean there won't be a proposed county map, or that the county plans to adopt one of these three maps as proposed by the city council?
On the 20th, we would have one map with any comments from the county to address.
Okay. Thank you, and I'd just like to end by expressing my preference for the, the second draft plan.
Are the precinct lines in a specific color? Or they're not in a specific color?
I don't think they're on there.
Do you have a count upon any precincts are in each?
We can get that information. It's around 80 in each of them.
80 precincts in each ward?
20 some in each one, like 20 to 21 in each.
Close to, it's not exactly.
Are there 80 total in the city?
Yeah, around 80.
Okay, so not in each ward? There's not 80 precincts in each ward?
Very evenly, just, I mean, on one of the maps that I added up, so.
Go ahead, sir.
Brad Weisemeyer, is they/them pronouns, not he/him. I live in Ward 3. Question, I understand the ration, the justification that we have for making the precincts line up with, to kind of reduce the number of different ballots we have to produce. Just curious if there has been any entertainment of the idea of going to six wards rather than having two at-large seats? And second question would be, I just want to re-clarify that we indeed are stuck at six, or the maximum is six counselors, plus the mayor? Just wanted to be sure on that one.
Yes.
And there has been no, no thought into expanding to six wards rather than just the four?
To this point, no.
I prefer draft Ward Plan 2.
All right.
I see, sir. George Davis here. I'm coming over here to this. I'm dropping stuff. My name's George Davis, and I represent our Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association, which is in Ward 3. And when we have neighborhood meetings, we have pretty good attendance. We have as many as 100 and stuff. And I would welcome everyone here to go and join your neighborhood board and attend those meetings, because you can get a lot done in the ward meetings and stuff, or in the neighborhood meetings, and then come to the ward. It's really beneficial to do that. I also wanted to say, I appreciate these maps that you've come up with today because finally I can read the streets and stuff. I know the ones in the paper, sometimes they focus on different things, and they don't give a clear picture of the maps there, but I would like to, you know, when you get older, you like seeing them blown up as big as possible, but I do like the maps, the way you got them set up. I do appreciate you having this open forum tonight, and I realize this isn't the final thing, and I understand that some people have perceived it as being changed at the door or whatever. I, when I called earlier today, I think it was pretty succinct as to what we were going to be doing and what we were going to be discussing, and it was going to be these three maps, or at that time it was two, I think. But I appreciate it, and I appreciate listening to everyone, and council, I want to thank you for your openness as far as letting us all speak. It's very important that we get to do that. Thank you very much.
You know, you bring up a good question. I was kind of looking at three, and, but being a south sider, I was looking at three, and I think, and our work councilman is Josh, and, and he, and then Joe on the other side, and I think that gives more succinct lines and stuff, just as a thought thrown out there. Now, I haven't been able to look at it totally in depth and stuff, but a lot of it looks pretty much unchanged, so. But I do like three. And I, you know, and I understand a lot of folks here said two. Two was the preference, and, and the only difference I could see was, and am I just babbling, or is this okay to talk like this? The only difference I could see was that dog leg going out from Ward 3 at the top, going northeast. See that, you know what I'm talking about there, that little dog leg out there? So, yeah. Anyway, thank you very much.
We have another speaker.
Hi, I'm John Letherby. I live in Ward 1. I want to express my frustration at the last minute change as well. I'm here because I saw the county map and I was concerned about it, as a lot of people are, and I'm happy that that's not here right now, but that also makes me feel insecure about the fact that maybe it will change at the last minute again. Do I have like the reassurance that it's not, that map is never going to come up again in this year? For consideration?
What you see are the maps that are presently, that the council has agreed to put under consideration, and these are coming from IT, and our legal department has looked at them as well, as well as the manager's office, and the council has looked at them as well. Mr. Manager, any comment?
I think that could be part of the motion that the council puts out there for tonight.
So can I ask also what the process is between tonight and then the December 20th meeting, to figure out which of these three plans will be at the December 20th meeting? Because you said there'd just be one, right?
Yeah. Tonight's meeting is an opportunity for the council to indicate their preference to the county, so one map.
Okay, so at the end of this meeting, we'll know which map? Okay.
And if I could say, I would prefer the second map, and I just want to also reiterate that I wish that we could still have remote meetings. It's not as easy to access these meetings now that they're in person. I think it's great to have both.
Yeah. Tonight's meeting is an opportunity for the council to indicate their preference to the county, so one map.
Okay, so at the end of this meeting, we'll know which map. Okay. Um, okay. Yeah, and I, if I could say, I would prefer the second map. And I just want to also reiterate that I wish that we could still have remote meetings. It's not as easy to access these meetings now that they're in person. I think it's great to have both, because it's nice to see people's faces, but it's just not very accessible. And if there was some way that we could do both, that would, I think, make the public more able to weigh in on the things that affect their everyday lives.
Council, we have received a lot of public comment, and let's open it up for a proposal. Is that right, Mr. Manager? That's what we're looking for? Council, input? Anybody?
I just, I want to say, first of all, for the confusion of the county map, never before has the county given suggestions. So, it was really just a suggestion, and I think they were trying to do it because of the school district. Whereas we have, I have talked to some of the school district people about possibly looking at our map, because it's more contained and more concise. I was on school board when we created the school districts, and they, because they, there's how many school districts within Des Moines?
Eight.
Eight. So, I think that's caused some of the confusion on why, what has happened. But in reviewing the maps, I think the compactness, the city maps are much more compact. I would say that I probably prefer three, only because I think the downtown area belongs together as an area. And it does take the straight line down Southwest 9th, but that would be my offering. Two or three.
Are you moving that then, Connie? I think we need a motion. So, you were stating your preference, but was that in form of a motion or not?
He had said a discussion, so I didn't know if anybody, I would be fine to move that, and then we can open up for more discussion.
We have a motion on the table.
Well, I'll move Plan Three.
Okay. You have a motion over here. Do you want to?
She moved Plan Three.
I moved it. I didn't know if anybody wanted to...
She moved Plan Three. Okay.
Yep.
Terrific.
Any other input?
I would just say, I would just say, Plan Three is, if you live on the south side, as it is right now, it's very difficult to explain that you go down park, partway down Southwest 9th, then down Park, then down Union, and it kind of crisscrosses. That map on number three, it goes from County Line Road straight to the river, and then it loops around Thomas Beck to Indianola Road, and that's where, and that's where it ends. As far as the, as far as being money, or whatever the comments that we heard, because that brings the downtown and the East Village, just because one councilman represents one area, doesn't mean that nothing vote, you have to have four votes to pass anything, not one vote. So, that argument is just null and void, and I just, it's, the things that go through folks' minds is incredible, is incredible to think about. And, you know, unfortunately, when, unfortunately, when us, when we try to speak and others are trying to speak on top of us, that's very disrespectful. We've given you time. We don't, we don't speak, we don't speak over the top of you, and we, and we listen to your input, and there's a motion.
Okay, hold on.
That's enough.
We did listen to the input. We appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I, I wouldn't mind commenting on one specific aspect. I'm quite honestly agnostic on the three, the three maps. I'm okay with any of them. I think they all, they all meet the criteria. I agree with what Councilmember Gatto said about the third map being the easiest to explain. In fact, there were people in that chunk that moved from, in the, in the first and second map, that moved on that Southwest 9th side, where I knocked their door this year, and they actually thought that they were represented by Councilmember Gatto, even after I explained to them that they were not. And partly, I think that confusion is over that Southwest 9th border. So, I think in that regard, it's a cleaner map, it's easier to explain to constituents. I do think there is concern about the diversity in Ward three. I don't think that is addressed in any of these three maps. Ward three loses some socioeconomic diversity in the University and Drake area, and there's certainly some concern. I do think actually that the third map here adds some additional socioeconomic and racial diversity back into Ward three as compared to the first and second maps, although that's eyeballing it, so it's hard to know without digging into the census data specifically. But I think that's a general concern, and something that we need to be mindful of going forward, and that I hope, I as a Ward three representative will certainly be mindful of it. I think one of the things is sometimes we focus too much on the wards. We all represent the entire city and all have an obligation to all of the folks who live in this city, and I will keep that in mind going forward.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you. Just to clarify, for purposes of the record, the motion is to approve Item Three with the third map as the attachment to Item Three. Is that correct?
The majority of us want the second one, though.
Council? Will, Carl, Linda?
I'm fine with three. I think three makes the best sense. Completely fine with it.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll ask everybody to vote.
Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
Did we have a motion adjourned? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
We all voted yes except for Mayor County. There's the vote.